This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, good evening, everyone. Those out in TV land on Charter 191. Officially opened tonight's meeting of the Southampton Planning Board, Wednesday, September 4th. We have a quorum available tonight, and we also have our board consultant, Richard Harris, here. And tonight's agenda, there are no building permits tonight, and it's a working session primarily tonight for zoning revisions. Mr. Harris here with us, and in your packets, everybody on the board, there's, you also received this by email, but I printed it out as well to have here for reference. The zoning revisions for accessory dwelling units, formerly known as accessory apartments, and followed by the revisions for site plan review. So this time, I'll have Mr. Harris open the discussion on the changes and the revisions that we will be addressing, subsequently going to public hearing at some point so it can go on the town warrant for a town meeting. Mr. Harris?
Let's get a little background on this. What's happened is in the bond bill, the legislature passed a housing act that amended various provisions of Chapter 40A Master in Law, which is commonly referred to as zoning law. There's a variety of changes in it, but one specific change related to accessory dwelling units. They defined accessory dwelling units in such a way that they have now made them an exempt use, subject to only reasonable regulation at local level. Among the restriction, among the elements of definition, it has to be a self-contained unit with living facilities, cooking facilities, et cetera, but can be attached or detached on the same parcel. Communities may not require that it be owner-occupied, either principal or accessory, but the unit can't exceed 50% of the principal dwelling unit or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So, and you, it's unclear what they mean by board approval. My understanding, you could have planning board approval, so does that mean site plan approval? You cannot require a special permit. That'd be, a special permit's always been considered unreasonable regulation. So, I've had this for another community that I was working for, and at the last minute, I revised their bylaw as well, with the, worked with the building commissioner on that. And essentially, what I suggested is we take the state definition, replace your accessory apartment definition with the state definition, so it's consistent. A building permit is required for renovations or for building a new one. And that's important because somebody may have existing house, and they're only doing interior work, still need to get a building permit. A lot of folks don't realize that, but you're opening the wall, you're, you're doing something with electrical, something with, you've got to get a building permit. I've added, I've tried to use the existing accessory apartment provisions as much as possible, and it's not making too much dramatic change. So, for purpose section, I had some concerns about some purposes you have, but I don't think they're deal breakers. But I want to add one in here, that was to provide reasonable regulations for the development of accessory dwelling units as allowed by Master General 48, Section 3. That's part of the purpose of this, so we're very clear about it. Wherever you have accessory apartments, that's changed, that's going to be changed to accessory dwelling unit.
So, what happens if the bylaws adopted and we haven't yet adopted regulations?
Well, I would suggest that what we do is we would develop-
The whole package.
Well, I'll develop board policies and procedures before then.
Okay.
I, I would always recommend that where you have a bylaw being adopted and says rules and regulations or policies and procedures, have a draft of those ready to go in case the town meeting says yes on the zoning bylaw. A lot of communities historically have not done that. For instance, I've got a project for one community that site plan review bylaw provides for them to have rules and regulations. They've never adopted rules and regulations in like five years. And so, they got a new planner, he said, "We need to get these in," so I drafted this. So, but I would generally recommend that if your, if your bylaw amendment says you may adopt rules and regulations, or you should have rules and regulations, have those in place, ready to go and be adopted if the town meeting says yes. One provision of the state law is you can only have one accessory dwelling unit on parcel. So, there's one way of dealing with that, that is say, you only have one unless you have a special permit granted to allow more than one. So, there's a way the bylaw could be addressed to allow more than one if you wanted to. Now, you had some general language in here about location access and conform the single family character of the neighborhood, that's kind of vague language, so I limited to very specific issues. Accessory dwelling unit shall maintain a separate entrance, either direct from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor, shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of state building code for safe egress. Again, following building codes. You had language in here about no greater than 600 square feet and non-minimum bedrooms. Revised that coincided with the state law that says no larger and grosser, accessory shall be, shall not be larger in gross floor area than one-half the gross floor area of the principal building or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Your parking requirement, it's kind of difficult to understand, so I made it more clear, there shall be at least one off-street parking space for each accessory dwelling unit. Where accessory dwelling unit is part of an attached, part of or attached to a primary parking space, should be incorporated into the parking area for the primary structure if possible. You don't want to increase in purgative surface if you avoid it. You required a special permit that's been changed to a building permit. And then I put in your section on accessory dwelling unit by special permit. May allow for more than one on a single lot. Somebody, they want to have accessory dwelling within the house, and then they want to have one detached or have two detached, and they've got a large amount of property, you could allow them to apply for a special permit, and they may meet the standards for a special permit, you could grant them that to have more than one. Remember, the state law only says they're entitled to one, that's it.
That would have to, that would have to meet the requirements of Board of Health, right?
Right. Nothing in here would negate the Board of Health approval of septic tank, septic system where that's applicable.
So, it has come up, and I just wonder if I can get a grasp on a citation. We can set whatever lot size we want, it's a zoning matter, but when the Board of Health gets involved for onsite septic disposal, the majority or a large part of the town is in the groundwater protection zone, a zone two. And my understanding, but I'm looking for a deeper understanding, is that Title V has a nitrogen loading standard for zone twos, deemed sensitive resources. At 440 gallons per day, calculated at 110 gallons per bedroom, per acre, per day per acre, acre day, which way it goes. And the upshot is one four-bedroom house per acre. When you apply the DEP limitation over top of our groundwater protection. Does that sound right, and do you have a citation for that?
That sounds right, that's what I'm familiar with. But I would just note that nothing in zoning negates having to comply with Board of Health and septic tank requirements.
Right.
Ever.
So, if you've got a really small two-bedroom house, and, let's say you've got a normal three-bedroom house, conceivably on an acre, you could add one bedroom accessory.
That's what the Board of, on there, then, in this, in the other community I worked with, so I raised the question, planning board raised the question, they said, "If I've got a house with, if I've got a lot of this small house on it, it's, can I do an ADU?" Or, let's say the house is less than 900 square feet, could I then build a principal, larger principal structure-
Yep.
-of 1,800 square feet, and call this an accessory dwelling unit? Our opinion, the building commission I talked about, we feel you could do that. So, if somebody has this small structure and they only have one bedroom, they could in theory build a three-bedroom unit and call this an accessory dwelling unit. There's a-
I've witnessed that done where the rationale was historic, and what became the guest house was profoundly historic and unlivable.
And I think part of, from a zoning perspective, part's going to depend upon what the zoning bylaw says in terms of setbacks, and whether accessory building can be in front of a principal structure or not, because typically the, most people build this, their home or have their home right at the closest part of the lot they can to the road. If you have bylaw that says no accessory structure is in front of the principal structure, then you could have issue of building the larger house behind it. In some communities, the Board of, Zone ZBA would grant waiver on that, and they'd be on the way. Yes.
Is the definition of principal structure in here, does that differentiate what a ADU is and principal is?
Accessory dwelling is, pardon, the definition of accessory, it is-
Related to some-
Related to, on the same lot as a principal dwelling. So, you have to have principal dwelling to have accessory dwelling. So, and the other, the other approach one could take-
Make some argument.
If somebody has an 800, 900 square foot structure, they could in theory do 1,800 square foot addition to that, and define, portion that as ADU and portion as principal So, and that'd be allowed by right.
Now, the pre-existing-
As far as your Board of Health question, they still had to meet Board of Health requirements.
Right. And I spoke before we started the meeting, and this is entirely different than that, but it's probably an offshoot of it, the pre-existing non-conforming lots in town that are, some of them are half-acre, some of them are acre, some are more than that, but they don't have the frontage. And when I spoke to Board of Health a couple of years back about it, she, that's how she explained it to me. She says, "Half-acre is minimum two-bedroom, acre or more is three or four-bedroom, da-da-da-da-da." So, that's, that's possible to restructure some of the lots we have in town that don't conform right now.
And Board of Health regs don't relate really to frontage, it's what the lot is.
Exactly.
That, the frontage comes a zoning question as opposed to Board of Health question. But there's also something in the legislation I have, I have been asked about, so I need to dig into it, that changes the concept of merger doctrine. Some lots that we thought used to, that we, that used to merge will no longer merge under the new legislation. And I've got to read, and get into that more, because that was not as clear as the ADU So, my, my suggestion language on the special permit is that you get a special permit to more than one, and do one that allows a larger accessory dwelling unit than allowed by right. And may, and the special permit should be, then require more parking spaces if you're allowing a larger unit, for instance. But that no special permit shall alter the otherwise applicable standards. And then considering the requested special permit, the board may require, may consider whether the additional ADU or larger ADU will be compatible with architectural style of the primary dwelling and any other ADU on the lot. So, the idea there being that somebody's applying for a special permit, and they've got nice wood siding houses, and they want to put up a very modernistic structure that looks totally different, or could say, "No, we need to keep in care of what you've got there."
This applies only to the special permit?
Only to the special permit. Because if they're applying for a special permit to get a larger unit-
Business, but doesn't it feel a little in your business?
If, if you're applying for the special permit, remember, special permit is special relief, is special permission.
So, in that, with that qualification?
One's by right, one is.
I'm following along, but I'm interested in doubling back to Paul's point. If someone comes forward with pre-existing non-conforming, but they're entertaining an exempt use, so what do we do with the-
The question is, what is the nature of the non-conformity?
Well, let's follow along-
Let's say a house that's non-conforming causes setbacks, so I don't think they would apply. If you've got a non-conforming lot, which means it's not a qualified building lot, then you couldn't get a building permit.
For the second residence?
For any reason. If it's a, it's a non-conforming lot, you've got to get a special finding from the ZBA or maybe planning board.
All right, because the hardest example, I'm imagining, you know, they're shy on frontage, but perhaps have extra acreage, so they're passing on Title V basis, and yet they're pre-existing non-conforming just because zoning changed.
The question is, what is a non-conformity? That, that's what you have to identify.
Most of the ones I'm speaking of are frontage. I'll bet most of them are frontage.
A non-conforming lot does not qualify for a building permit.
Right, but how do we, how do you change, how do you change the zoning for that? What, what part of the zoning is, do we attack for that?
We could amend, there's several ways you could approach it. We could amend the dimensional requirements to do away with the frontage requirements. You could also do what another community does, that they, I thought it was very creative when I went to work with them on interim basis, they had a provision there for special permit for dimensional variation. So, somebody that had a lot that, or wanted to build something that didn't meet the setback requirements, or the lot didn't meet the specific dimension requirements, could apply, in that case, to the ZBA for special permit for dimensional variation, not a variance, and their ZBA had a difficult time handling that, but it's not a variance, it's a dimensional variation. And the reason they did that was, under state law, to get a, something that meets the standard for variance is really tough.
Some questions for you.
But you could create a special permit for dimensional variation that has different standards.
Questions on regarding that. You said, trying to quote you, "You cannot get a building permit if you have a non-conforming lot." So, if I have a house that are a non-conforming lot, I can't put in a bathtub?
Well-
That's a building permit. And the other question is, could it-
To build a new dwelling unit.
If I do something that, as long as what I do doesn't make it more non-conforming-
Right.
-it'll still be allowed. You, I think, I just want to clarify, you said-
Yeah.
-no building permit if it's non-conforming, but if they're doing something that makes it not more non-conforming-
But there has to be a finding used by ZBA that's, that's not issued.
Wouldn't you have to be identified as pre-existing non-conforming already, and then that would kind of capitalize on the other renovations and stuff, because you've already, you're already pre-existing non-conforming, so why would that prevent you from doing any renovation?
Yeah, exactly. Let me clarify my, my point was-
Clarify the building permit.
You couldn't get a new building permit to build a new, new, new house on it, because it's non-conforming.
Right, if it's a non-conforming lot, empty lot-
Right.
-then you cannot get a building permit for it if it's not a living building.
But if you're, if you've got a non-conforming lot and you want to alter your existing building, that's fine. Now, if you have, if you have a grandfathered lot that meets the standard for grandfathering, then you could get a building permit to build on it. Just make that clear, too. But that, a grandfathered lot is a non-conforming lot, but non-conforming lot is not always a grandfathered lot. Just so we can sufficiently confuse the people at home about this topic. I think we're doing a good job.
That's, that's a good point. There's a difference between pre-existing and grandfathered.
Right. Application procedure, basically, there are the outset of building permits required, unless you're applying for a special permit. Transfer of ownership, that really doesn't apply anymore, because you're not, you don't, you can't time limit these, because there's uses. And then, the accessory apartments in existence before adoption of this section, I understand what was trying to be achieved, but I think with this new change, I don't think that even really applies anymore, because if they meet the standards in state law, they're exempt So, that, that's what I've done on these, on ADU, that I think sufficiently would meet the state law, and there's some question in some communities, "Well, why should you bother with this? I mean, we wait until whenever." Well, you may find out some, like another community did, that the new state law is getting a lot of attention, a lot of press, and people are starting to look at, "Oh, I can do this without getting a special permit, without living in one." I've got a client that I just advised him to wait on his property in Hadley and in Amherst until February 3rd, and then pursue it by right. And we got to deal with Board of Health questions.
So, when you say that, say for instance, a town doesn't pass their bylaw by that time, is that-
I think then what happens is somebody goes into the building commission, gets, says, "I want to build an ADU in my backyard, my house is 2,200 square feet, my ADU is going to be 900, and here's the building plans." You don't have any reasonable regulations on it, as long as he meets the state law requirements-
There you go.
-and building code, he's entitled to building permit. That's the reason, so the community, building commission, I felt it was essential for them to try to get something that identifies with reasonable regulations on the books.
Are you suggesting that we try to do that as, this is a special town meeting, or, because the annual is in May?
Yeah. You see, I would suggest if you can, get at the fall town meeting.
Is there one scheduled that you know of or heard of?
No, there's some discussion whether there might be one in the fall or the early winter or-
I would suggest, what I would suggest is, you could wait to see what the more likely timeframe is, but if there's a chance that they may have a winter special town meeting, have a public hearing in November, so, remember, a public hearing in the zoning bylaw amendments is good for six months. So, if you have it in November, and then they have a special town meeting in February, you're, you're fine. If they don't have a special town meeting at all, then you've got to do another public hearing in spring for the May town meeting, but, yeah. But if there's possibility of having a winter town meeting, I suggest we look at November, early December, public hearing.
Once the town passes a bylaw, isn't it not effective until reviewed by the state attorney?
Actually, it's, it's in effect when town meeting adopts it. Somebody can apply at their risk. If they want to apply before the AG approves it, and as follows the publication requirements, they can submit an application at their risk. But it does, if you look at the stat, statute, it's effective upon town meeting adoption. It's one of those things that was in effect, but if AG rejects it, it's no longer in effect. That means any permit, anything you got in the meantime, is invalid. And I would suggest that any permit would then be issued during that timeframe, note that it's at their risk, not at the town's risk. In fact, we, I worked in the community, was working in the community where we had common driveway change like that, somebody wanted to apply before the AG approved it, and we specified in your application, state that you're applying at your risk for the purpose. Town council there said, "Make sure that in any decision, it says they applied at their risk."
On your, your last page there for the chart-
Yes.
-high accessory uses?
Yes.
And so, you, you cross out planning board, you put in special permit, but the-
According to your chart-
Where SP is?
SP is used by right with site plan approval.
All right.
I thought SP was special permit, too, 'til I read your chart.
This is site plan approval.
Yeah, I, and that's one of the things I'm going to suggest that we do some, at some point down the road, is change the chart to be SPR for site plan review, and SP for special permit by planning board. But the reason it makes sense for SP is because the chart still has special permit by ZBA, select board, and those bases are going away, so.
So, the next sheet is the warrant article, which will be-
And then, before we go to that, let me also note that for site plan review, you cannot deny the use. If a use is exempt in a set of site plan review, you're still limited to looking at for the reasonable regulation, not- reasonable regulation, not, not the broader review that you normally do for site plan.
So, I'm assuming this sheet with the purpose of the warrant article is for the warrant publication, right?
Yes.
So...
Except for the top portion up here, it's, the proposed, the purpose of the warrant article, that section is for your information, not for...
It's pretty lengthy, and that all has to be spelled out in the warrant, huh?
It, some communities do that, some communities, what they do is they draft the warrant, see as stated in attachment A or whatever, and then they, they put it in as attachment.
And provide a handout with the red...
Yeah, yeah. It depends how the community does it.
This, this is longer than the original bylaw, after you edited it. That's quite a bridge now, the ADU bylaw, compared to the old one.
It is different, it's, or we can go to site plan approval.
Before we get off this ADU thing, though, does the board want Richard to just look into how we might pursue in, in zoning revisions, the non-conforming lots that are in town that property owners have, that might give them an opportunity to develop that with a small, small home or something?
I'd rather clarify it now than later.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah, it seems it would be ripe for the, I don't want to use the right term, site plan review.
Before we get off this, too, we just had a couple of...
Dimensional variation is the hook that I like.
Just before we get off of that, Richard, I just, so now, this can be inhabited by any tenant, not just a caregiver or a family member, correct?
Correct.
Right. Next question, how is this going to affect, or will it affect, anything to do with these small or tiny homes that are...
I would expect that as long as they meet the state building code, and they're a total, complete housekeeping unit, they will fit in as accessory dwelling unit.
Does that have to be put in the table of use regulations and definitions or something?
No. I think that, I think as long as it meets the definition of ADU, they'll, and meet these standards, they'll be fine.
All right, there was one issue that, some of these come that are on, on wheels. Now, that, it would, that wouldn't be applicable, would it? Anything that would be...
I wouldn't think that'd meet the building code.
Right.
Did I read that septic facilities are required in a dwelling unit?
You have to meet whatever, you, it has to be fully plumb, so I mean, you've got to have bathrooms, all the accessory requirements.
Not an outside facility?
Right.
Okay, well, questions been raised before.
That's, that, that goes to, Dan's on the list for the Airbnb or...
The definition is...
Glamping or camping or whatever.
Definition is a self-contained housing inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah.
All right.
So, you can't, you can't have this place you sleep and then have another building that you do your personal business.
You miss that whole story, it's very entertaining.
Whereas, there's somebody on, I heard on YouTube, they, they refer to it as taking the bio break.
I was going to say composting toilets.
So, you can't have, place you sleep and cook and have another building for your bio break. That, that won't work.
I'm just wondering, you know, like, with composting toilets, is that something that could decrease the sewage discharge rate? That would allow more than...
Have to take that out of Charlie Connecty.
Yeah.
The question is, would, would the Board of Health say the compost toward it meets the sanitary code? I would not think...
I hope the answer is yes, but I don't know that it's...
I would think they would say no.
How about a porta potty? That's, that you have...
That may, that's for temporary use, that's not for year-round occupancy, year-end use.
That's like a holding tank.
Those are temporary uses, those are not permanent uses.
Well, can we, now that we're on the subject, because it has to do with housing, but that, have an issue in town here where there is a, you know, that camping, glamping spot. Is there some way we can address that? There might be several people in town that have a lot of acreage, and they want to, they want to have campers come or something. Can you do anything like that on a seasonal basis, provided that it's, it passes muster with the Board of Health?
You can amend the zoning bylaw to make that a permitted use by special permit, or by right. I mean, you can, you can put in your bylaw to allow seasonal, seasonal residential facilities, either temporary structures or permanent structures, by, in your bylaw, if you want to.
And not Airbnb, because people get confused with that. This lady thought originally that, you know, her thing fell under Airbnb, it wasn't even close, but I mean...
That, that's one thing, Airbnb is a platform, it is not a use.
It's a short-term rental.
It is a platform for short-term rental, it is not a use.
It's trademarked.
You got, was it Vermo or, you have about half dozen of these platforms, but it's a short-term rental, that's, that's a question. So, you can make a bylaw that regulates short-term rentals.
All right, so, would you put that on your list?
Okay.
To, to do some research on that, and also clarify this Airbnb belonging? Short, when you say short-term, would it be, is that the term you use rather than seasonal?
Yeah.
Short-term.
Because some people will do these, it depends where you're living. Some people do short-term rentals, and the big time is in May and June, if they're around college, university. If they're in the mountains, oftentimes it'll be in winter. If they're on a lake, most often, it'll be in summer. Sometimes winter is good ice fishing. So, there's different seasonal periods that are better. So, you call them short-term rentals that regulates, what they do is regulates uses that are, residential structures occupied for less than 30 days.
All right, so how are you going to define short-term rental versus camping? Because a short-term rental, it's not a house, it's not a cottage.
Short-term rental is a, short-term rental is usually a droughting unit, or a portion of a droughting unit used for short-term occupancy. If you want to have recreational facilities and camping, I recommend that be a separate provision.
I, I thought where we were headed is that because it's an exempt use, you'd follow the path to permit an ADU, but the way you use it is, is short-term rental.
Typically, you, most communities are not going to want to have ADUs built for short-term rental.
No.
That's...
Because it takes away from the housing supply.
Right.
But, we can look at short-term rentals, and if you want to look at recreational lodging facilities, we can look at that as well. And that's how I would term campers, or tent camping, would be recreational lodging.
Does that sound like something that...
Short-term rentals, yeah, that covers the...
The biggest concern I see with these is, depending on the acreage somebody has, or how many, how many units that they would put in, because the first thing people are going to, the neighbors are going to be inquiring about is the amount of traffic, you know, the number of vehicles. I think that's what triggered this one originally, is people saw headlights coming from far into the field in front of the neighbors or something, so that's going to trigger it.
It tend to be at least two, maybe three things that trigger people most often. Number of, amount of traffic, sanitation facilities, and noise. Potentially, a fourth one is fire hazard, because you have people out there camping, where they're having the fires, where they, where they're taking their bio breaks. So, those are four things that typically trigger people's reaction. And that's the reason I would suggest, it's one thing, lots of our short-term rentals, but if you're talking about recreational lodging, like camping, I suggest that definitely be a special permit.
Doesn't that devolve, you know, with some, you brought up a good point when it comes to public safety, or fire, whatever. Isn't that going to trigger something for these folks that want to do this, when it comes to liability insurance on their property?
Yeah, I would, yes, but I would also tell you that...
Will you sign a waiver?
Folks that do, that use, a lot of folks, you put their properties out on Airbnb, or Ven, Ven, Vermo, Verbo, whatever it is.
Verbo, yeah.
And I have a friend of mine, him, her and her partner have used Airbnb a lot, and they had a really bad experience, and I said, "Well, understand that all those are not inspected." That's been true, that's been a big problem in a lot of communities, is anybody can list their property on Airbnb, that doesn't mean they have Board of Health or Fire Department inspection.
Could you write that in the bylaw?
Yeah, I think what you'd want to do is that, that's one reason for requiring a special permit for those type of things, is you would require, for instance, especially on a camping one, an operation management plan that they'd have to stick to. Require at least monthly inspections by Board of Health and Fire Department, Police, at their, at the property owner's expense. And those, there's certain things you'd want to require that the town tax person shouldn't have to pay for. And, yeah, because, let's say you had 150 acres, and you wanted to put 200 tent sites out there, campsites. That doesn't sound like, on density basis, a lot, 200 over 250, but it's probably going to be 200 over a 30-acre portion of it. It's going to be concentrated more so than you would want, and you want to be sure it's well-managed, instead of people dropping their trade in there and basically living there year-round. You want to be sure that is only a seasonal operation, it's not year-round.
Should we, should we get into something that large, though, or should we put a cap on the, on the acreage? I mean, I don't, I don't think the town would go for something that big.
Let me, let me do research on it.
100 acres or 75? I mean, it's a great business enterprise, but on the same token, we want to go that route?
Let, let me suggest I do some research and bring back to you how it's addressed in some other communities?
There you go.
And then, we can have that discussion at that time.
Yeah, it can be unique. So, it can't be unique, it's got to be a...
No.
But, you know, to, just on a personal, from my own personal opinion, I, I empathize for the lady that had this come up. Beautiful piece of property, and it butts a conservation area, and there are people that want to get away out in the country from wherever, couples or something like that. You're not, you're not talking a raucous type of group, that, whatever. And I can understand, I understand that, 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 the type of philosophy she had in a beautiful piece of property, helps her pay, pay for the taxes, but also it's public enjoyment, so I don't, I don't begrudge her that.
Does it meet the setback from the conservation land?
I, I didn't walk the property, this, these, the Board of Health was out there with it. I don't know how far away from, you know, any of that.
Well, that, that's part of the question we need to look at, is, and people use the term conservation land in different ways. I look at conservation land as, as property that's under the care and custodianship of the Conservation Commission.
In this case...
Some people look at it from, is it wetlands?
Right, so, separate issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but yes. And this is an issue that could come before the commission, or should perhaps be looked at harder. Agent said, "No, it's, no, it's not wetland." I said, "It's a 200 feet back from the perennial river."
Sure.
It's jurisdictional, but...
It's jurisdictional, but it's not necessarily conservation land.
Correct.
Are you still on conservation?
We have one beach in this case, we have...
Find out if, if it, if that, did it come before you?
No, no, I haven't seen that.
Oh.
So, let me do some research on this topic and bring back some examples, because, and I say what I did about conservation, because there's a setback required for a perennial stream, intermittent stream, wetland, but there's not a setback from, quote-unquote, conservation land.
A, a budding lot.
Yeah, right.
Whomever.
Just, just to be clear, if conservation owns, is managing, that doesn't necessarily have setback, it's the wetland or resource area that has a setback requirement.
Side yard, gray or yard applies?
Yeah, yeah.
No matter who.
But, the minimum, and that may not, and my guess is, when it comes to this type of use, that's not going to be sufficient.
Not sufficient.
Dan, excuse me a minute, Steve, Dan, you could also inquire with the building inspector, Ron, because he was involved in that as well, so he would, he would know on the property, I'm assuming, where, where the cabin, or the A-frame was built.
Oh, okay.
See how far, if he's got any dimensions on it.
So, I'd take a look at both these topics, the short-term rental and recreational lodging.
Right, sorry to get off the track, but...
That's all good stuff.
Somewhere on the agenda was update on the LTA grant, work with PVPC. Is that on the Zone 2 update and Barnes Hackford group?
I'll update that after you get, and go through site plan review first.
Yeah, let's finish this, and he's got it on his list, he's talked to PVC, PVC about that.
Okay, well, I wanted to make sure we were going to get to that. Continue on.
Essentially, what I've done, you're, the current zoning bylaw has site plan review and site plan approve as two distinct levels of review. Site plan approval is generally considered to be the, the ultimate goal or purpose of site plan review. And so, this amendment seeks to bring your current dichotomy into a more customary structure of site plan review is that, and then have provision for minor site plan review that is more appropriate. So, any project subject to site plan review would have an approval phase, some be through a minor site plan review process, some be through the regular review process. The purpose, for most, I tried to stick with your existing purposes that... The purpose, for most, I tried to stick with your existing purposes that apply to site plan approval, which is the more stringent standard. And basically it requires site plan review for any construction, alteration, expansion of a residential drill, building of two or more units, any principal accessory building used for exempt use, and any non-residential building. And I use those three because that's currently what your bylaw says for site plan approval. Any exempt use also would have site plan review. And that's different from a building for, for instance, somebody has a site plan, let's say they're, they're in used property for keeping cattle, keeping horses, it's a residential area, but under state law, remember, if you have an agriculture use that occupies two acres or more and you make at least a thousand dollars per acre from agriculture use, it's exempt from zoning. So in theory, somebody could have a couple of horses out there, cattle, may be a little bit more dense than what you're used to, but they can raise a couple and sell them off on an annual basis for, and make a couple thousand dollars, easy. Or maybe the manure they can sell, I don't know, whatever. So there may be a use that's exempt that you won't have site plan. Any uses identified in the use table require uses permitted by right with site plan approval. Changes of use where the new use required more than, more parking than the previous use. You've got a shopping center, somebody has a retail space in it and they're gonna change that to a restaurant. And the restaurant may have more parking requirements than the retail use or office use. Construction or expansion of parking lot, it may have some impact on buffers and neighbors' properties, et cetera. Site plan review for exempt uses. These are uses that are in chapter 48, section three, are subject to only reasonable regulations. It makes it clear that the purpose of site plan review is for compliance with reasonable regulations relates to parking, open spaces, building height, and building setback requirements. That's how we're able to get that incorporated inside the AG, basically mimic that language and they said, "Fine." Exemptions, and these I took pretty much from your existing bylaw. A building wholly or partially destroyed but may be rebuilt without site plan review by, by the planning board if rebuilt without change to building footprint or the square footage of usable space. If it's destroyed and they're, and they had a 2,000 square foot footprint and now they're gonna make 3,000, they gotta have site plan review. Site plan view is not required for changes of use where the following conditions are met, proposed use does not require a special permit, there are no proposed or required outside alterations or additions to existing buildings and parking area. They may not propose it, but the bylaws or state code may require additions. In that case, they need to, for instance, exits, they may have to have additional exits and landing areas, or the parking may require additional five parking spaces, all those things. So that would still require a site plan review. The planning board chair or the planning board's consultant in other communities I've used, has been used as town planner, but we don't have a town planner. In consultation, building commission and Board of Health determines no additional changes on site, on onsite disposal system or additions to parking are required. And that's why the Board of Health is included in there, make sure that Board of Health is aware of this proposal. And then there's a section in relationship to building permits and special permits. Basically, any, any of these have to perform approved site plan. They have to give approved site plan for the commensurate activity and if special permits required, site plan and special permit will be integrated together. Fortunately in Southampton now, that's all planning board for special permits, so that makes it simple. Planning board may adopt, shall adopt and may from time to time amend reasonable policies and procedures. One of my philosophy in zoning bylaw amendments, zoning bylaw amendments, zoning bylaw provisions should never specify the number of copies that have to be submitted for applications, the planned contents, et cetera. That should be in your policies and procedures or rules or regulations.
Not in the zoning bylaw?
Not in the zoning bylaw itself. The reason being, I'm doing projects in another community, their bylaw specified you had to, 15 copies had to be submitted. Okay, that's probably written 20 years ago. Nowadays, you have this thing called a computer and a lot of folks submit things on PDF. So you no longer need to circulate hard copies.
What a concept. I like, I like that.
You reduce the number of hard copies and give me a PDF, we put it on the website so the public can look at it, and we email it out to the departments and board members so they can look at it.
Then I'll have to buy some big envelopes and collate and stuff and take them to the post office and have them weighed.
Don't you have to allude to it in, in the zoning bylaw that refer to policies and procedures for whatever, right?
Yeah, and that's why this is in here. Says you shall adopt them.
And the adoption is within the sole purview of the planning?
The planning board, right.
So that if we decide 14 copies is not enough?
You amend, you hold a public hearing, amend it and require more. In South Hadley, what we did was we said two hard copies and one PDF and the planning board reserved the right to request additional, require additional copies if during the review process that became necessary. Ninety-nine out of 100 that won't be required, or nine out of 10 anyway, but sometimes get into a more complex project and more people want to see hard copies. Okay, give us six more hard copies. And I remember when we adopted that, Jeff Squire was planning board chair and Jeff had just submitted a plan that day to North Hampton that required 17 hard copies.
Well, they weren't for every town department?
That were this big around and they're a sustainable community. I gotta have that. And he said, "This makes so much more sense because most of those copies are gonna be thrown in recycling or trash. People are never gonna look at them."
It'd be a fire hazard until somebody...
Right. And so then all the trees you just cut down for this. So we, yes, we adopted that provision and I remember two times telling applicants, "We need three more copies of your plans" because certain particular departments and one member of the planning board wanted a hard copy. All the other times, the PDF was more than sufficient. The other, I used to use the website as a archive storage, so you could always look at it.
If, if that's what we're asking of the applicant, we need to reassure the chair that he need not make copies on his printer and distribute hard copy. PDF works for me. And this package came, even with the late addition, it's perfect.
The, the big thing is the plans. That, that's, that's big. And the drainage studies, those are two things that, why you have 17 copies of those things, I don't understand. And the other thing we required in rules and regulations is whenever there's a revised plan, or revised material, it has to be submitted in the same quantity and format as the original. So...
It's good.
All that goes through, but that's in the rules and regulations, not in your bylaw. You can change that. So if you decide, if your rules and regulations said seven, you decide, "Hey, we're throwing four of these in the trash every time," you just turn to three. And in application and project review fees, use of outside consultants, and provision for granting waivers. And all site plans and submissions shall conform to the planning board's policies and And then outlines procedures for...
To applicants?
App, review of the process, review of the applicants. Now, your current bylaw says you make decisions in 60 days, days of dismissal. I don't know if you're gonna change that to 90 or not, I think 90 is more, gives more latitude. It doesn't mean you have to take 90. But the rationale is this, somebody submits an application on a Friday, you don't have a town planner look at it, planning board chair takes a look at it a week later because he's on vacation somewhere. Then you advertise the hearing, so now you've got about 42, 45 days from day of dismissal. And then the planning board needs to extend it because you're waiting for Board of Health comment or waiting DPW. You have to get an approved extension with the applicant. If you have a 60-day period because you only meet every twice a month. If you allow a 90-day period, you've got more flexibility there without requesting extensions to cover everything. That's, I, I, I did a 90-day period, but I just want, I highlighted that, want to get your feedback.
Is there a state regulation regarding them?
Now, on site plan review, special permits, you have to begin the hearing in 65 days of dismissal and you have to render a decision in the 90 days of public hearing. Essentially that's when, and that's always been interpreted as when the public hearing ends. Yeah, it's, it's vague about that, but that's how it's always, that's universally interpreted that way, almost universally interpreted that way.
Well, from experience, we've never had anything go that long, but I like, I like the, your idea of the leeway, but I, we haven't had anything in my time on this board that's ever gone beyond the 60s, but it'd be nice to have the leeway in case you run into some circumstances where you've got a lot of delays and continued hearings.
Did I read constructive approval comes up in certain cases?
Yes.
Because we can be generous with our timeframe to hopefully avoid deadlock on a contentious issue, but it might take time to work it through. If we fail, it's deemed approved.
Right, and that, that's, that's, even if your bylaw doesn't address it, that's the consideration. I like to be more explicit about it, that constructive approval occurs if you don't act. And action isn't just you taking a vote, action is founding the decision with the town clerk and applicant. So when you talk about the nine days, that, that's not just to complete review, that's to actually have the written decision and send it and have it stamped.
You agree with 90, you want to change that to 90, just to give us the leeway?
I'm leaning more towards a 90.
Yes, doesn't hurt.
And again, it doesn't prevent us from closing the hearing earlier.
You always act earlier, just acting later gets you more of a problem. And then 40, public hearing is commenced within 45 days of dismissal. I received the application. I've got in the applicant notification of a butters. Usually I put notification on butters in the rules and regulations and to some degree more details would be in there, but since you require the applicant to notify butters, I felt it appropriate to put that in the bylaw itself.
And it's 300 feet the minimum?
That's what your bylaw says. We can look at, if you looked at the requirement for a special permit, it's notification of parties and interest. Parties of interest are not above or than 300 feet. Parties of interest are abouters the property and that includes properties across the street from it.
In the circumference of it?
No, no. And parties in interest that are contiguous to a butters 300 feet on the same side of the road. It's, and I, when I first moved to Massachusetts and started working with South Hadley, I read that different and talked to the accessory and she said, "No, you look at the actual wording of the statute, it's very specific and it's not abouters than 350 feet of, 300 feet of property. It's abouters contiguous and abouters to butters than 300 feet and they're basically on the same side of the road." So, but your bylaw says abouters in 300 feet of such a prop, nonparticular. And that's the reason I have that in there.
Was there anything in, there's nothing in here that says whether it should be certified return receipt mail or anything like that, certified?
They provide proof of better.
So it doesn't have to be certified?
No, that could be in the rules and regulations. There's different ways you can provide, provide proof, but most commonly it's done through certified mail, but...
As long as it's verifiable.
Right. They have provided proof and will address that in the board's policies and procedures. Then it goes through the decisions and that'd be, permits and use have to be compliant with it. No permit issued until, without written approval of the site plan. Approval of site plan submission shall require affirmative votes of a majority of the board as constituted, three out of five. And I took that from your existing bylaw. That is not necessarily what is required everywhere. For instance, and the reason this becomes significant, let's say Mark and Stephen don't attend the hearings and they're not, for some reason they're not qualified to vote or they're not present for the hearings or present for the vote. And it's just you, Paul Figuera, just three other members. Under, with this is worded, it requires unanimous vote of those three members. Absent this language, it'd be interpreted to be majority of the qualifying, qualified members to vote present. So if only three were qualified to vote, it'll require two, two vote majority. But I went with the language you have right now. I just want to throw that out and, yeah. Because I had that come up on a project in another community and town council, only the majority that were there.
It's silly, but what if there's four people? So, what if, if there's four people and two vote, one?
Then it's three and one.
Oh, three and one, okay, thank you.
It'd be, that'd be a... It'd be, it'd be a simple majority, be a majority of members qualified to vote.
I see.
But if it's, and so, if, if there's only one member not qualified, it's still three majority. But if it's two that aren't qualified, and I recently had a stormwater permit where we had only two qualified members present, so therefore they couldn't vote on it. And when they did vote, we had four qualified members, required a three to one vote, only got two out of two that was a denial. And the applicant made challenge that because one of them had issued. The, yeah, and if it came down to only three members, it'd be a two to one vote, and that'd be sufficient.
Paul, I guess I would ask, maybe we consider changing it to the qualified members that are present, so that we don't run into that situation of having to have, when we don't have, there aren't many people here?
I don't have a problem with that, no.
So, just footnote, because I obsess about things like this. Question about notice to a butters, and who's in a butter, and is it a geometric problem, or is it part geometry and part definition? And I heard.
More in definition.
More in definition. All right. Because I just double-checked, and. The town has invested in a hosted GIS application at Tianbon that has all of our tax assessor data. It's got also the footprint of all structures. It's enhanced beyond what you get normally from mass mapper, but some of the resource data is not as robust. However, there's a tool to find an address, get the details about it, and to get in a butters list.
Right.
And it has choices, adjacent or different radius. So I put in, ours is three hundred. I can imagine a case where that somehow might over-include?
It does, it always does.
It always over-includes?
Yeah.
Okay.
It never under-includes, it always over-includes. And that's the reason the butters is typically a certified butters list from the assessors that then go back, they look at the forty-eight definition of parties and interests, and they do that, and then they.
You think?
Exclude.
You think?
Or, I know in several other communities I've worked with, they then exclude parties that don't.
And if you've got a big parcel or complex boundary, what's exactly three hundred feet if you don't have a computer doing the buffer? So, that's the point. If you have the link, it's profoundly easy to generate that a butters list.
And you can then, and it's just as easy to go then, then delete the ones that don't fit in.
Precisely. So we're putting an obligation on the applicant.
Yes.
The applicant comes to the volunteer staffing at the assessor's office, and they need a cheat sheet of how the applicant can help themselves.
Typically, you go by a certified list from the butters, from the assessor's office.
Well, a cheat sheet, so the volunteer staff in your desk can do that with alacrity.
So you don't have a full-time assessor or paid assessor?
No.
Okay. You used to have an assessor.
Well, we have, we have good staff, but I wouldn't say it's full-time.
It's signed off and certified by someone from the lists I've seen.
The signing piece wouldn't be a volunteer, I'm sure, but anyway, having a tool, even if the tool then needs adjustment, and, and so, I just think four steps on a cheat sheet would get us there. But it would save a lot of pain and suffering.
And how the assessor, now some assessors don't have that, and they actually take their maps.
Yeah.
And they.
And a scale.
Yeah, and they.
Write their slide rule.
They did that way, and that, that becomes problematic if they leave someone out.
In real life, it is going on today.
And in real life, if they leave someone out, it creates a problem, because somebody didn't get notice.
You gotta read and list it again.
Would that be something you add to that policies and procedures document?
It's more critical, it's not so much you have to re-advertise, but somebody didn't get notice, and they find out about it.
Yeah.
You've rendered a decision, they then appeal it in court and win. And then the applicant says, but I relied upon the town, and they then want to have town remembrance on holding harmless for damages that they've incurred. And that becomes a town council challenge. Fortunately, I never had that issue. Because if you ever found out somebody didn't get properly notified, we canceled the hearing Site plan decisions shall be in writing, made a, post a public meeting, and then file to town clerk. And you'll be amazed at how often I've heard about, not, I've worked with other communities, where one and two weren't done. Where they made a decision and they didn't bother to write it out, it's in the minutes, or they didn't include it on a posted, a posted public meeting. Well, we meet every month, on the fourth Thursday of every month, that's not sufficient, had to have it on the agenda. And then it has to be mailed to the applicant and filed with the building commissioner. Extension deadlines applicants may request and the Plan Board may grant. Normally, I'd just put this in partisan regulations, but. In written decisions, these options, approval, denial, approval of the reasonable conditions. Constructive approval, you fail to act, then as time specified, it is deemed constructive. Applicant obtains certification of action taken, and that is the same as an approved site plan. And then, I took some of your existing conditions, standards, and made them into these review And you also can consider whether it conforms to your, to the relevant requirements of your policies and procedures. And then, work must conform to your approved site plan, and then your, your processes set forth, consideration and acting form requests deviate, and should be consulted terminally if such changes are significant enough to require public hearings. And I say that because some communities, the building commissioner will, will make a determination that doesn't require action, and want to make sure that the Plan Board is making this determination. Then put in there, minor site plan review, that takes your, remember, this, I've gone through four basically, is your existing site plan approval process, applied to everything. Minor site plan review is a expedited review of those smaller projects that don't really, there's no reason for public hearing. Doesn't require a detailed review by a lot of folks, but it's still an input from people. And I use the criteria you have right now. Minor site plan review, activity building do not require a special permit, variance or finding. It's allowed by rights. But not see the total increase in the footprint of the structure by two thousand square feet. Personally, I think two thousand is a lot. And I think, if it was me, I'd put down to five hundred and no more than a thousand, something like that, because it's a thing we can get over, you know, for instance.
That's pretty, yeah, that's pretty big for minor.
Yeah, for, again, your site plan review process, which is centered this, uses two thousand square feet as a threshold. I think that's high. I think a thousand square feet is a more reasonable level.
Yeah. Mark, you good with that? Father Stephen?
Yeah, he knows a lot.
Yeah, it is. So we'll change that to a thousand? And the parking is no more than ten, you good with that? Or is that more, is that, is that in conjunction with the square footage, the two thousand that was there, the ten?
I would reduce, I would reduce them parking spaces down to five.
All right, because you're reducing.
In fact, makes more sense to say no parking, no additional parking is required.
Mark?
The reason I say that, because if it's. You're doing, you're not doing a public hearing in minor site plan view. So let's say somebody's doing a thousand square foot building, or even a four hundred square foot building, or no building, but their use requires three additional parking spaces. And those three parking spaces are going to have to be in the setback area it joined Those folks on screen, they found out that those trees that they've had for the past forty years with the joint neighbor, that screen, are now going to be gone because they're cleared out for parking, and they had no notice of it. So, I think it's not too much to say, hey, if you're, if you're going to increase the parking area, not necessarily, I want to restructure it so that more spaces, but more parking area. Somebody may have a parking lot, but they can just re-stripe and gets them the parking they need without alteration of vegetation.
So, the parking limit is very traditional, but the hot button issue you raised is tree removal. Is that criteria for triggering a higher level of review?
I would say vegetation removal within the building, within the required setback Because.
Or larger than XDB eight?
The, I'm more concerned about within the setback area because, yeah, they may be doing four hundred square foot addition, but there's this tree there that they need to take out, a couple of trees. Or they may have to do more, do in the internal part of the property for access, but they're not getting then twenty feet of the joint property, ten feet, I, so I see it more as any alteration of vegetation within the required setback.
Is that, you know, be careful in wording, so I can't take any trees down than ten feet of the property line?
If you do.
I'm just going to take.
If you do, you can't do a minor site plan review, you got to do the regular site plan review.
Do I have to get a special permit to take?
No, site plan review, not special permit.
Okay, site plan review, not, not, not as simple.
Not if your project is removing a tree, only if your project is adding to it.
That's what I'm concerned about is worded right now. If I take down a tree, which I just did not too long ago.
Right.
Within twenty feet or fourteen feet of my property line, I have to come in and get a site plan review.
No. You'd have to go through the form, the larger process, if it's within the required setback area. If you remove vegetation within that, and it could be remove vegetation for the purpose of expanding parking area, because that's the big issue, is somebody's taking vegetation down, and they're putting drainage there, because they need to put drainage there, and they may even be resolving a drainage problem. Issue, are they taking trees down to, that's going to be placed with parking area, that's with payment?
Yeah, I agree.
That's the big issue.
Yeah, but it needs to be worded so there's clear that not just taking a tree down. I mean, I took trees down for, because they were leaning on my house.
Right. So, if the project was only to cut down a tree, you wouldn't be in this process at all. If you're cutting down a tree to increase the parking area.
Right, if you, if you tie it to the project.
You have to have a valid reason to be in the process, and then that's one of the criteria, or could be, or, or we could leave the hell out. I, I don't want to make this.
Come here, sir.
Thank you, that's a nice word. Onerous?
How about we just deal with the number of parking spaces?
No, no enlargement of parking area sounded good for the reasons.
The concern I have about parking spaces, if somebody can re-stripe their part, the existing parking area and meet the requirement, why go through the public hearing process?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's expanding the parking area.
Area.
That results in removal of vegetation within the required setback.
Parking spaces around two hundred square feet?
Yeah.
So, you know, is an increase in parking area by more than five hundred square feet or four hundred square feet?
Andy?
You can just decide, I think it's about eighteen.
No, no, I thought, I thought this was absolute, if there was any increase in parking.
What did you decide? Either you were talking, or we'll put a number on one of the two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For, for, any additional parking for a site plan review, the question is, what would constitute a minor? And for minor purposes, if you're, you're not qualified if you're moving trees, vegetation for expanding parking area within the required setback. If you do that, then you don't qualify for minor.
Excuse me?
Submissions shall conform to the rules, the Board's policies and procedures, and then review procedures shall be set forth in your policies and procedures, similar to what's required for regular review, and decisions shall be what's required regularly. And made a public meeting, which the minor site plan review submission is listed as an agenda item. And I put that specifically because some communities don't list these, list all these on their agendas, and they're really, no means all they really have to. Same review stands as the others, any, and then on lapse, any site plan approval shall lapse after two years and granted thereof if a substantial use has not commenced, and their policies and procedures will set forth guidelines as to what substantial use is. Because I would guess that if we did a poll here, we come up with three or four different definitions of substantial use. In South Hadley, we had a project that it was a subdivision for, in a special permit, and two phases. One phase was thirty-nine lots, one was fourteen, and plant, some Plan Board members wanted to say, all of the lots had to be built and houses on them for that substantial use. I had the opinion that if they had most of the infrastructure in, so that at least a majority of the lots were qualified for building lots, then that made substantial use. Because there's seven lots off. We came up somewhere in the middle between the two of them, but, so it's helpful to have some guidance in your policies and procedures is what that really means. And helps the applicant know so they can finance it accordingly. If they know they got to wait five years before they can get finished, that's another If they know they gotta wait five years before they can get finished, that's another question. Appeals are in accordance with forty-eight, section seventeen, and violations are a violation of resounding by law. So, with the changes talked about here, everybody's pretty comfortable with this?
Yes.
My next step is going to be go through other sections of the bylaw where you use site plan review, site plan approval, and get that inconsistent with this. That's I have for tonight.
While your ear don't go away.
Okay.
Uh, the, if you recall, the East Street Aggregate Voltaic on the Bishista property at the orchard, they, um, had to come up with a decommissioning agreement for surety purposes and stuff, so they sent this along, I forwarded to Richard, and he reviewed it. They originally had a draft, and then he reviewed it and brought back comments, but this is the final product that, Richard, you are comfortable with?
Yeah.
For surety?
Yes.
Can you just outline that briefly, what, what the decommissioning agreement entails?
Basically, it entails a surety to cover the removal of the facility in case it ceases to be used. The original sure, the surety they provided us is annually renewing surety, but got an original amount set forth in the agree, in the plan board decision. And plan board decisions that they had to be increased every five years. This decommission agreement will fit in with the surety agreement in that it commits them to providing the town with a updated engineer's estimate for what's on cost to decommission, and then they provide an updated surety to fit in with one hundred and twenty-five percent of that updated engineering cost.
Seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars.
And every five years, they'll have to be updated. If it increases to hundred, increase to eighty thousand, then they'll provide hundred thousand, I think it's hundred thousand, increase, hundred thousand surety at that time. If it increases to hundred thousand, hundred twenty-five thousand, whatever. Every five years, then you provide the board with a insurance, engineer's estimate, updated estimate, and then new surety for the increased amount, hundred twenty-five percent of the increased amount. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is, before we go too far, water supply protection district, we touched on that earlier. I met, I've talked to Kyle at PVPC, I'm having another Zoom meeting with him, with him, and Patty next week, and the intent is for them to be on the agenda at the September nineteenth meeting.
How old is the nineteenth?
So they're gonna, they're gonna be?
Or is it, no, eighteenth meeting, eighteen?
That whole week.
So the, that's the D L T A?
Yes.
And they're gonna be presenting that night?
Yes.
Do you get the sense that the boundaries of the zone two have been refined?
I don't think they've changed much.
They're not looking at that?
They're, they're gonna, they're gonna be looking at two, it's whatever Mass D E P has on their website as zone two. Mass D E P on the website maps zone two, they don't map zone one, and they don't map zone three.
No.
They do map zone two on the website.
Well, zone one is derived, it's four hundred feet.
It actually is not always four hundred feet.
Okay, all right, but our bylaw keys into zone two. Zone two triggers the nitrogen loading standard, that limits the amount density we've never achieved.
Yeah.
Absence sewer.
I used to think it was four hundred foot as well until I started working with, on revising Nunnberg's Water Supply Protection District, and they've got a ward district that's got about eight or nine wells. In some cases, the zone one is two hundred fifty feet. It depends on the size of the well and a lot of other factors, but it can go up to four hundred feet, so that's... I think most are used four hundred feet and just, and then find out, and then it doesn't go over water either, apparently, because it, the well doesn't draw from a surface water body, it draws underground.
There's engineers.
All right, so.
I don't know more about groundwater than I wanted to work on their bylaw.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Yeah, I was just gonna do that. So I've got them on, I've just gotta make sure, okay, so the eighteenth for PVPC, and you will be here as well?
Yes.
Okay. Now, getting back to the decommissioning agreement, do I have a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve the decommissioning agreement with a five-year adjustable surety agreement incorporated.
We have a second?
Second?
Motion made by Stephen, second by Dan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm assuming, Richard, that, when I sign this, send them a copy, but I mean, shouldn't this be in the hands of the treasurer's office?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, I, the treasurer should always hold any agreements, right.
Committee reports? Committee reports?
I'll, I'll just take a bear time, you guys go first.
Well, I, I, I have nothing for, for this committee that impacts this committee. I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mark?
No, we're, um, we're negotiating some changes for the, uh, nothing.
Is that what, safety complex or?
Yeah, safety complex, yeah.
Stephen?
Mostly it's future activities, but, um, tomorrow night, the open space committee meets, and, um, did Cindy have an opportunity to speak to you, Paul?
Uh, no.
She expressed to me that you might be looking for different representation from planning to open space.
Oh, she, on that issue?
Yeah.
I told her I, I had no desire to continue on it.
All right, so you're desiring to beg off, and the plan board should identify someone else to represent?
My, my comment to her was, because you're representing the select board, you're for planning, it's almost like a dual role to report here if you need be.
We'll get to that. I, I'm wondering if someone else might like to volunteer to join the open space committee, it's very congenial, but.
I know most.
You know Cindy?
I know Cindy, I know Janet.
She sometimes bakes through the committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm already got three, three going, and I get some other things going personally, so.
Dan's got the most stars for most committee assignments, I think.
Yeah, I'm committed.
I, I thought what you can do is just, then have the rest of the board's committees and just have Dan.
Okay, so Cindy's aware, and we have people engaged, but nobody more to offer, all right.
And at this point, Paul Fergow, I'm expecting, might be submitting his resignation soon.
Oh, dear.
Because of his lack of, he's got too many family commitments, and one now that happens on Wednesdays, so I'm, unless there's a major change, I'm just expecting that he might be withdrawing soon.
When does his term expire?
Oh, he was just elected, uh, I think he was just elected this past year.
He's got at least three years to go, three to four, five, maybe, yeah?
Four, yeah.
I encourage you to start identifying potential replacement, at least on an interim basis.
But it's not official till I get his letter and submit it to the clerk.
Thing is not official till he submits it to the town clerk, so.
Right.
Want an update on one seventeen to one twenty-five College Highway? Scott and I have been interviewing and talking to a variety of land use planners and community engagement planners to see if what we think we need to design and execute a RFP for different uses of the property, starting with guaranteed use by the public safety building and the senior center. And we have also consulted with Pioneer Valley Planning Council, and today we made a pretty good connection with Mass Housing Partnership.
All right.
And both have, obviously, planners who do exactly this with some frequency, and they may have discounted services, or they may have aptitude that marries up with a traditional hired firm. But we have a proposal in hand from B S C, B S, B S C Group.
Yeah, B S C Group.
And we expect one in just a couple of days from Berkshire Design Group.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's that for professional help. I'm sitting in with all the potential stakeholder boards and committees to see about fleshing out their wish list for what part of the pie, what they're thinking about. And even as the task forces that are well along with feasibility studies, you know, public safety is reevaluating the square footage of that building, that would have knock on, maybe not huge impact, but it, it would reduce the footprint of the land area. So, looking for both, you know, footprint of development plus a separate count for parking, so we understand about generation. But, you know, as I go through the table of use, it's all R V and C V, and the C V is limited to about five acres along Route ten, and it's, it's, it's fairly awkward. Leave aside most, we can do the two musts is without bringing sewer, but to do any meaningful amount of housing and get critical mass, it's gonna require sewer. So there's a whole bunch of things that fold together, and they have to fold together in a reasonable timing sequence for construction and finance, but we're getting real bids so that we can make a decision in the, in the short term.
Now, what exactly are you looking for them to do?
Well, it's the pony or the cart, right? Public engagement would start with input from the town boards and committees, and, you know, that would be the two task forces, public safety, senior center, conservation commission, because there's a parcel that's ideal for that, and housing authority. And the piece we're missing is around mixed use, someone who has the commercial for-profit development mindset, or the market rate housing piece. We have collaborative partners helping us think through how to approach affordable housing as a component.
And, and, and standard, but what are you looking for the consultant, oh, end product for the consultant?
Public engagement, survey, couple of public meetings, we'll end up with a preferred plan. Then the engineers take the preferred plan and develop an engineered plan for conveying thing, and maybe outside of the contract, a further step, the housing piece or the commercial mixed use will end up, I don't wanna presuppose anything, if the town doesn't own it, they need to be prepared to convey it with a legal conveyance.
The reason I ask is, you mentioned the existing zoning restrictions. I would assume that the consultants will come up with a recommended plan for development, including recommendation of how to rezone the property to accommodate the desired plan. And I would expect that would be a overlay district of some, of some kind, that would, and I say that because I, I know, I've been asked for other places that, that had similar issues, and you look at development in place, and look at what somebody wants to do, and say, what do you wanna do? Actually, what you have doesn't conform to your zoning. The community bent it backwards to allow that to occur, but if you wanna go forward, what you really should do is develop an overlay district that respects what you have and incorporates what you want to achieve. And I assume that's what you're, like.
And, and there are several paragraphs about forty R as a overlay.
Even if it's not forty R. And I say that because if you do forty R, you have to, multifamily has to be twenty units per acre or more, and it has to be twenty to twenty-five percent affordable housing as a condition for, for. Forty R, you're not gonna get the incentive payment until the sewer is there, unless you can demonstrate to the state that you're gonna use the incentive payment to, to achieve the sewer, not just plan for, but to achieve it, and then they hit their discretion to allow that money to go forward.
So our feasibility study going on now, tie in bond, would lead to an expression of interest for one stop, take a twenty-five percent engineering, and queue up for Mass Works, Mass Housing, but for the, to really leverage the sewer investment with federal and state loans.
But only, only way you can get the Mass Works is if you have a developer on hand.
Yeah, what?
If you have a developer committed.
Well, okay, we'll work on that.
And that's gonna, it's a chicken egg question, you don't have the sewer, how's the mountain commit? And that's the reason, I think when you look at forty R, you need to look at the two, twenty-eleven location, as well as maybe this one as well. Uh, because you're like a mound and a half of sewer, of which the first half mile from East Hampton, you have development potential on both sides of the road, and then with conservation wetlands, you go for the next mile, you may have, this, next mile is basically two miles of road frontage, you may have a half mile of road frontage that has development potential. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm not following you.
They might be, they might be looking at coming down the Greenway.
The Greenway, which means you're doing dead space for a longer period of time. And that, that comes from a sewer management perspective.
There, there are a whole bunch of questions about whether to do sewer, so there obviously have to be two scenarios. If no sewer, does it matter tinkering with the zoning, because we won't get?
You don't get housing, you, you don't get, you don't get the multifamily for sure.
And, and so.
Only get forty R for sure.
And, and so, if sewer is gonna be a big investment, how, how big a community do we amortize it over? What's, what's the service area? That's all being addressed upfront in the feasibility study. And, you know, they've gotta look at the O and M costs of creating a whole new department to run. Even though all the treatment would be in East Hampton, we'd be running a bunch of pipes and a different product.
What you wanna do is, you wanna contract East Hampton, have them man, manage sewer line for you. Maintain it, everything.
Manage it, but we'd own it.
You want it that they, basically, have them manage the maintenance of it.
Well, all, all, that's way out of my kit.
Otherwise, what I'm looking at is hiring DPW staff for this one segment sewer line, and that's a whole different bottle of wax and storm drain and water line. And that's a whole different bottle of wax and storm drain and water line. And, you know, again, I said before, first thing I think, you need to get, even if East Hampton's saying you're fine with it, you need someone to ride in from East Hampton. That's your first step. Agreement with them to give you sewer treatment capacity. And I understand the benefit of going up the Greenway if you can make that work. But that's, that limits your development potential from it. That's usually when you look sewer line, one of the benefits you look at is how much development potential, how much tie-in can you get along the roadway? Because that can offset your development costs dramatically. If you've gone through dead space, as Mark knows, you go to dead space sewer line, that's, that's like going through a desert.
That's what feasibility.
Somebody's got sewer rates.
Yeah, no, those are all good questions.
One of the deaths drives up sewer rates dramatically.
Tonight because I'm unqualified, but, you know, the reduced construction costs to have a dedicated main in the Greenway where you're not dealing with MDOT for all of those miles. And you're not triggering explosive growth everywhere. You're doing it very mindfully with essentially a service limit. You know, the old fashioned annex thing. You've got a service zone.
Well, you're going to be limited by the amount of capacity that East Hampton agrees to give you.
Ultimately, but it seems to be a lot there for...
But they're going to, I would be shocked if East Hampton says, say, we're limiting to X amount because they need accommodate any potential growth they want to have.
No, 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 of course they do. That's, that's, this is net, net, net. There's a big new pipe and we'll have to see if it all proves out. But except for the 385 Main Street affordable housing development of known size, nearly has its ZBA permit. Jeff did a wonderful job presenting it a month ago. That's a friendly 40B to accomplish what the zoning in place would not allow. This friendly 40B promoted by the town, where the town is the developer, I'm not sure how that all works.
That you can do friendly 40Bs anytime you have a friendly town and friendly developer.
Yeah, well, that, I think, is required regardless. And then we figure out how to paper the deal, which form of overlay zoning is going to work first.
If you, the most desired approach is if you can make 40R district work, then makes it a whole lot easier with the developer. The challenge in Southampton is to multifamily and 40R is the 20 units per acre. You can do two-family, three-family at 12 units per acre. That may be more viable.
Is that the threshold?
That's minimum threshold.
So someone couldn't come in with a 18 unit?
No. Under 40R statute, multifamily, your zoning by law has to, you have to allow 20 units per acre.
Have to allow.
Have to allow. And when we've had discussion in South Hadley with the state, it was, that's the minimum threshold for a 40R to qualify. Project to qualify is 40, is 20 units per acre.
The individual construction project.
It'd be 20 units per acre.
For building number three, it has to be 20 units per acre.
Under 40R.
I thought you could say, well, you know, that's fine. It's actually 10 units of housing per acre plus 30,000 square feet of commercial.
Under 40R, the way, that's not the way we understood it. And in fact, Wayfinders went through all kinds of gymnastics on the new, new project they're going to do in South Hadley at Oak DeGuy.
They're the developer in South Hadley under 40R.
Yes, 40R. So they could, they can do 60 units. And they had worked our way to get, be sure they had a three-acre site, not three and a half, not, they had, so they met, met the minimum threshold. That's, and I think the reason for that is, our bylaw allows 20 units per acre. But if you come in at 15 units per acre, we'll make it real easy for you to get approval.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the...
Achieve the public purpose you set out to achieve.
And, yeah. So I think that's the rationale for the minimum 20 units. But you could do...
Take a hard look at that one. That's a lot of units.
So you could look at, but depends on how, that's for the project. Now, you may have in your 40R district, and the way, the way they develop the initial incentive payment is they look at for multifamily, 20 units per acre minus the number of units allowed by right under existing zoning. So let's say it's all commercial zoning and does not any residential units. Then, and your 40R district is going to be 20 acres. They calculate the incentive payment based upon 20 times 20. Okay? 400 units. That doesn't mean you have to build 400 units. The 20th breaker, when the developer comes in with this project, or with her project or their project, they've got a project site of three acres. They're going to build 60 units. They're going to build 20 units per acre for the project site.
I see Oz sitting in a field of poppies. Why does that image come to mind?
So that's, that's how 40R works. And that, and as the Wayfinders kept working with the partnership that owned the property, come up with a three-acre tract so they can meet the 20 units per acre minimum.
So 40R obviously is complex and challenging. But Wayfinders is the agency that already has established relationship in Southampton and really strong leaning in, will help you figure out what you want and the market can actually build. And, and we have four or five different Wayfinder examples and other examples of high-density mixed use that may not be 40R. And North Village Hill in Northampton is perhaps a poor example of 40R because the state has its talents in.
They have all kinds of, yeah.
So much. Cowles Mill District, was that a 40B or a 40R or something else?
It's up in Amherst. I'm not, I'm not sure if that was a friendly 40B or, my guess is a friendly 40B.
It looks like a nice mixed-use development with density that I thought would qualify for 40R. Because it's, it's testing my sensibilities.
If your objective is affordable housing and the community's willing to support a friendly 40B, then that's the way to go. You're not going to get the financial benefit that 40R gives you. The challenge for most affordable housing developers.
If you live for the ZBA, not the planning board.
Correct. And it still has to go through public hearing process. Has to go through the regular 40B process all over. And when you're looking for that, there's no way the community can guarantee it's going to be a friendly 40B. Because you get into the public hearing process and you start having 100, 200 people show up at the hearing, it can get, it can change some people's perspectives that thought it was going to be friendly real quick. 40R, on the other hand, is allowed by right. All they have to do is meet your design standards that you develop. And then they're entitled to approval. It's, it's, and it makes it more receptive for developer knowing that, yeah, I'm going to put this $2 million into the site planning and I'm going to come out with an approved plan. All I got to do is get my tax credits and monetize those and then I can start building. Now, that's going to be five years in the process anyway, but minimum three, I would guess. So.
I'm sorry, what would be three years away?
By the time they submit their plan and then start breaking ground for it.
Under a 40B?
40R.
Under a 40R?
And most affordable houses want to take them three years. Because not only they have to get approval, they then have to, typically they get tax credits that usually take two rounds.
Big time.
That are done annually. And then they have to monetize those to get their funding, so.
Plus, the infrastructure grants and stuff has to come in because they're building apartments and they're building roadways and...
If they can get grants, there's not grants available generally. For municipalities there are, but.
Mass Works for?
Oh yeah, for municipalities.
Affordable housing.
But not for the housing itself, but it's for the infrastructure to go into.
The town owns the property.
Yeah, yeah. So, but you're going to sell the property and that's how, you know, it's not going to be the developer of the housing. Private nonprofits will be the developer of the housing.
Yes, that's correct. But, you know, do we have a saleable lot until we have the road?
That's, and that reason, you may look at five years easy because it's going to take a while to get your sewer out there.
We got to get the sewer to hurry up so that it coincides with the yet again delayed Greenway construction. But the state has taken such an interest in our Greenway, we're deferred but fully funded and funded in a way that we're not competing regionally. It's a near mark from the state level. And with that kind of interest and that kind of conundrum, if sewer is feasible, it makes sense. It's got to coincide with the construction of the Greenway. It's not going in afterwards. So it might leverage a very considerable state and federal investment with time as well as construction money.
And if you dig a 40R, one of the things you'll notice is the state law sets 20 units for multifamily as a minimum. It doesn't have a cap. South Hadley, we put a cap. We have different cap for both the two districts that we have. And I remember Larry Smith was working with us and said, no, there is no cap. So, yeah, we want a cap. We don't want to have somebody come in and say, oh, we can do 40 units per acre. We'd have folks become very contentious then.
So 40S got wrapped into the same presentation that I got from Bill.
Yep. Right, 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 from the state?
Too many consonants.
That's school funding.
Presentation. 40S is small starter homes, first lien buyers. And it has different density requirements. Single-family detached, I don't know if there's an attached townhouse option, at eight per acre.
Eight units per acre.
Eight units per acre. And, you know, I, I thought it may be a mix and match possibility because I can see that style being attractive in Southampton.
And it's still any sewer fort.
Oh, absolutely.
And last I, I know we looked at that in South Hadley and last I checked, they had no, this four years ago, the state had not had any approved 40S districts yet.
I don't know that you can afford to build an envelope for each family at the price that's in the statute. Great, okay. That's my committee report. I move that we approve warrant item for our...
Mr. Harris.
Consultants, July expense, July and August expenses, whatever the sense.
July and August, 1665. Do we have a motion? Stephen?
Yes.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I can't cut you that check right now.
I thought someone walked away with it.
Takes Venmo.
No, in fact, I had, I had a client call me today. He said, I got an invoice. Can I send to via Venmo? I said, no. I can get, I said, by check. I don't use Venmo. In fact, I had a issue with my bank a few months ago, six months ago. Somebody using Venmo set up an account and took 2,500 or so out of my checking account.
No way.
I never used Venmo in my life. And they gave, bank gave to me on a, advanced, on a conditional basis. They had to do their investigation. And then nine days later, they emailed me and sent me an alert saying, we've completed investigation. It wasn't authorized. They made, they claimed the person made a mistake of the account number. Yeah, right. And they replenished my account with it. But yes, I have never used Venmo and I, with that experience, I never will.
I had a landlord that wanted me to get paid. No, it wasn't public Venmo. It was Bank of America's app, same damn app.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.